Shabbat is a time for rest and time to honor three things: family, our people, and God. But most important of all, we honor God in all His works. We rest because He rests on the seventh day. We rest to refresh our soul, to know Him.
Women of valor, who can find her far beyond jewels is her value. Her husband's heart trusting her, he should lack no fortune.
If you're hosting Shabbat, sweetheart, you better get moving. Reparations might take you all afternoon.
Really? Just to visit? You haven't even swept?
Get out of here.
Let the fire go first thing.
I'm excited. A little terrified.
After you, Ned, rest the door.
With this kind of advice, what could go wrong?
Shabbat's at home.
Shabbat's at home.
I have to be home to prepare for Shabbat, as I'm sure you do.
So many did you even hosting Shabbat dinner?
It will be nothing like yours, I'm sure of that. I'm going to try. Shabbat's in your name.
Shabbat's in your name. Mary.
There's any left when they come back, I'll give it to you.
Yes, let's eat. Like I said, you are very popular.
Or it's a pharisee here to shut us down for letting you be here.
Are you married?
No.
It's good to see you.
Yes.
I don't want to be rude, but it'll be okay if I...
Oh, yes, of course, please come in. I just never thought you'd... I have guests here. This is my first time. I don't know what I'm doing.
Rabbi. Rabbi.
Now, you're doing nice, Mary.
They are students of mine. I trust they have been polite.
Of course. I'll just... From now. Now, the heavens and the earth were completed, and all their loss. And God completed on the seventh day His work that He did. And God abstained on the seventh day from all the work He did. May God bless this seventh day. He hallowed it. For thereon He abstained from all the work that God created to do. Blessed are you, Lord our God, ruler of the universe, who creates the fruit of the vine.
You've loving and willingly given us...
You have lovingly and willingly given us your Shabbat as inheritance and memory of creation. Because this is the first day of our holy assemblies in memory of the Exodus from Egypt. Blessed are you, Lord our God, King of the universe, who brings forth the bread from the earth.
Amen. Amen.
Well, hello. Welcome to the second session of the Chosen Bible Study. It's so good to be with you. Get your bibles out and let's get busy studying God's Word. It is such a joy and a privilege to be gathered with you again for our second session of the Chosen Bible Study. We're back at our Methodist campground here in Mississippi. This beautiful old building, this tent, has been in the Mallett family for over 200 years. I have wonderful memories just over the last 35 years of gathering around this table with all of the Malletts to celebrate Sunday dinner after our Sunday worship services. And it reminded me today about Shabbat. You know, Mary Magdalene is beautifully radiant, transformed, and redeemed, and she busily prepares to do her very first Shabbat. Dear Lord, today, what is Shabbat? And why is that important to you and me? We're not Jewish, but yet God wants us to know what Shabbat is and how holy it is unto Him. Last week was our first session, as I stood over in that tabernacle, and we learned that we are chosen by God. We are called. He loves us. He knows our name. And this week, we're going to study what it means to be chosen because we can rest, right? We can rest in the knowledge that God is faithful. He has always provided for His children, and He always will. He always will. Today, we're going to see that, as we watch some of the clips from the movie before we begin, that the followers of Jesus are preparing for Shabbat. Shabbat means Sabbath in Hebrew, and it celebrates God's miraculous rescue of His chosen people from Egypt. It's a reminder to all God's people that God is faithful and that He is present with us. Even now, He is here with us. Let's begin our time together and go to the Lord in prayer. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we love you. We praise you. You are holy. You are faithful, and you are so good. And Lord, we ask that you be with us now as we dive in together. And Lord, we study Your holy Word. Teach us all about Shabbat. Teach us about the Sabbath day and why you made it holy. We pray that you would rain down your Holy Spirit on us all gathered together now. We love you, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen. The Bible verse for today's study comes from Isaiah 43, verse 2. "When you pass through the waters, I will be with you; and when you pass through the rivers, they will not sweep over you; when you walk through fire, you will not be burned; the flames will not set you ablaze." The Scripture verse that we're going to begin our study with comes from Exodus, chapter 20. You probably know what Exodus 20 is. It's the giving of the Ten Commandments. We're going to learn about what is the fourth commandment given by the Lord. Hear now the word of God. If you have your bibles, I invite you to turn with me now to Exodus 20. "I am the Lord your God, who brought you out of Egypt, out of the land of slavery. You shall have no other gods before Me. You shall not make for yourself an image in the form of anything in heaven above or on the earth beneath or in the waters below. You shall not bow down to them or worship them; for I am the Lord your God and the jealous God, punishing the children for the sins of the parents to the third and fourth generation of those who hate Me, but showing love to a thousand generations of those who love Me and keep My commandments. You shall not misuse the name of the Lord your God; for the Lord will not hold anyone guiltless who misuses His name. Remember the Sabbath day by keeping it holy. Six days you shall labor and do all your work; but the seventh day is a Sabbath to the Lord your God. On it you shall not do any work, neither you nor your son or daughter nor your male or female servants nor your animals nor any foreigner residing in your towns; for in six days the Lord made the heavens and the earth and the sea and all that is in them; but He rested on the seventh day. Therefore the Lord blessed the Sabbath day and made it holy. Honor your father and mother so that you may live long in the land the Lord your God has given you. You shall not murder. You shall not commit adultery. You shall not steal. You shall not give false testimony against your neighbor. You shall not covet your neighbor's house. You shall not covet your neighbor's wife or his male or his female servant, his ox or donkey, or anything that belongs to your neighbor. When the people saw the thunder and lightning and heard the trumpet and saw the mountain and smoke, they trembled with fear. They stayed at a distance and said to Moses, "Speak to us yourself, and we will listen; but do not have God speak to us, or we will die." Verse 20, Moses said to the people, "Do not be afraid. God has come to test you, so that the fear of God will be with you to keep you from sinning." Last verse, verse 21. "The people remained at a distance while Moses approached the thick darkness where God was." What is the fourth commandment? Remember the Sabbath day and to keep it holy. That is what they were doing in session two of the Chosen Bible Study. We saw in the movie today that they were going to observe this day, that when God created the heavens and the earth, and to honor all things, to honor their family, to honor people, and to honor God. Every Sabbath, the first day of every week, the Jews observe Shabbat. They do to this day. They read from Genesis, the story of creation, and they pray this beautiful prayer. You heard it in the clip earlier. Blessed are you, Lord God. Blessed are you, Lord, our God, ruler of the universe, who brings forth the fruit of the vine. You have lovingly and willingly given us your Shabbat as a memory of your inheritance of creation because this is the first day of our holy assembly in memory of the Exodus from Egypt. Blessed are you, Lord our God, King of the universe, who brings forth the bread from the earth. Amen. Genesis, chapter 2, tells us, "Thus the heavens and the earth were finished, and all the host of them; and on the seventh day God ended His work, which He had made; and He rested on the seventh day from all the work which He had made; and God blessed the seventh day and sanctified it, because in it He had rested from all of His work, where God had created and made. These are the generations of the heavens and the earth when they were created, in the day that the Lord God made the heavens and the earth." So, these Jews remember once a week, every week, about God's faithfulness. They're remembering how God brought them through circumstances, through trying times, led them through the wilderness. We know that because of their sin, they wandered in the desert for 40 years. But they faithfully observed Shabbat each and every week. Let's look up some other Scripture references to tell us about the faithfulness of God while they were doing the Exodus for those 40 years in the desert. Let's look at how God was faithful to His chosen people. Let's go first to Exodus, chapter 13, beginning with verse 21. Exodus 13, beginning with verse 21. Give you a few minutes to find it in your Bible. "After leaving Suckoff, they camped at Athem on the edge of the desert. By day the Lord went ahead of them in a pillar of cloud to guide them on their way; and by night in a pillar of fire to give them light, so that they could travel by day or night. Neither the pillar of cloud by day nor the pillar of fire by night left its place in front of the people." Now turn one chapter ahead to Exodus, chapter 14, and we'll be reading verses 19 through 22. This is going to tell us about the parting of the Red Sea. "Then the angel of God, who had been traveling in front of Israel's army, withdrew and went behind them. The pillar of cloud also moved from in front and stood behind them, coming between them and the armies of Egypt. And then throughout the night the cloud brought darkness to one side and light to the other side; so neither went near the other all night long." Verse 21. "Then Moses stretched out his hand over the sea; and all that night the Lord drove the sea back with a strong east wind and turned it into dry land. The waters were divided, and the Israelites went through the sea on dry ground with a wall of water on their right and on their left." Now turn a couple more chapters ahead to Exodus, chapter 16, and we'll read verse four, and then we'll read verses 12 through 22. A little bit longer this time. This is going to tell us about the manna and the quail that was provided for them for 40 years while they traveled through the wilderness. Exodus, chapter 16, beginning with verse four. "Then the Lord said to Moses, 'I will rain down bread from heaven for you. The people are to go out each day and gather enough for that day. In this way I will test them and see whether they will follow my instructions.'" Then let's get down together to verse 12. "I have heard the grumbling of the Israelites tell them, 'At twilight you will eat meat; and in the morning you will be filled with bread; then you will know that I am the Lord your God.' That evening quail came and covered the camp; and in the morning there was a layer of dew all around the camp. When the dew was gone, thin flakes like frost on the ground appeared on the desert floor. When the Israelites saw it, they said to each other, 'What is it?' for they did not know what it was. Moses said to them, 'It is the bread the Lord has given you to eat. This is what the Lord has commanded. Everyone is to gather as much as they need. Take an omor for each person you have in your tent.' The Israelites did as they were told. Some gathered much, some little; and when they measured it by the omor, the one who had gathered much did not have too much; and the one who had gathered little did not have too little. Everyone had gathered just as much as they needed.'" That's really powerful, isn't it? Verse 19. "Then Moses said to them, 'No one is to keep any of it until morning. However, some of them paid no attention to Moses. They kept part of it until morning; but it was full of maggots and began to smell. Moses was angry with them. Each morning they gathered as much as they needed; and when the sun grew hot, it melted away.'" Now we're going to read in verse 22 what the Lord commanded them to do on the sixth day so that they would be able to observe the Shabbat. Verse 22. "On the sixth day they gathered twice as much, two omors for each person; and the leaders of the community came and reported this to Moses. And he said to them, 'This is what the Lord commanded. Tomorrow is to be a day of Sabbath rest, a holy Sabbath to the Lord. So bake what you want to bake; boil what you want to boil; say whatever is left, and keep it until morning.'" Now, we remember that we read just a few verses earlier. When they tried to keep it overnight, what happened? In the morning, it smelled bad. It was full of maggots. But look at what the Lord did on the sixth day. "So they saved it until morning." Verse 24. "So they saved it until morning, as Moses commanded; and it did not stink; and it did not have maggots in it. Moses said, 'Eat it today. Today is a Sabbath to the Lord. You will not find any of it on the ground today. Six days you will gather it; but on the seventh day, the Sabbath, there will not be any.'" Nevertheless, some of the people went out on the seventh day to gather it, but they found none. "Then the Lord said to Moses, 'How long will you refuse to keep my commandments and my instructions? Bear in mind that the Lord has given you the Sabbath; and that is why on the sixth day He will give you bread enough for two days. Everyone is to stay where they are on the seventh day. No one is to go out.'" So the people rested on the seventh day. Wow, we can just read through Exodus and see all of the provision, the protection. We can see the presence of God while the Israelites were in the wilderness. You know, their circumstances didn't change, did it? But God provided for them. You know, the one who was leading the Israelites through the wilderness was the one who created it, isn't it? We have to learn, as the chosen children of God, we don't worship creation. We worship the Creator. We don't worry about where our next bread will come from or where our next meal will come from. God will provide. He was faithful to the chosen people during the Exodus, and He will be faithful to you and me. So let's talk a little bit about Shabbat, about the Sabbath day that the Jews observed. It is a wellspring of rest. You know, these first-century Jews were really not much better off than their wilderness-wandering ancestors, were they? They were living in their own country, but under Roman rule and under Roman oppression. But yet, they continued to honor God and to observe the Shabbat, the Sabbath day, as a reminder to them that God has always been faithful to provide for their needs for all the needs of His chosen people, and He always will. As we just read in Isaiah 43, verse 2, our peace and our rest doesn't come from the removal of our burdens, from a change in our circumstances, but rest and relief, our shalom, our peace, comes from God's presence with us in the midst of our circumstances. I love this episode today. It's probably one of my favorite episodes of the eight of the chosen. You see, Mary Magdalene, for the first time, is experiencing God in her life. She has felt His rescuing, redeeming power. He has saved her from these seven demons that Scripture told us about last Friday. But really, her circumstances didn't change. She was still living in the time of Roman oppression. Times were hard. But she had Jesus. Jesus was with her. His presence changed everything. I love the part where Nicodemus encounters Mary Magdalene in the marketplace, and he can see that her countenance has changed. He knows that she's not the same person that he visited in the Red Quarter earlier. She had Jesus. She had found the kind of rest that only comes from communing with the Creator. And we can see that she was so ready and excited to celebrate His presence in the Shabbat. It would have looked something like this that we have set up here on our own table, on our own Sabbath day table. She was excited to celebrate and remember, remind herself all of the wonderful things that God had done in the past and the things that God was doing for her in the present. Now certainly, Nicodemus' Shabbat would have been very religious. It would have been very respectful. It would have even been more ritualistic according to the Old Testament law. But you know, sometimes we need to be careful that we don't become so comfortable in our worship, especially on our Sabbath day. We need to be careful to see God's presence first. Sabbath is meant to worship the presence of God in our lives. Simon Peter, he was just so overwhelmed with financial hardships that he didn't even want to celebrate Shabbat. He chose action over rest. He didn't trust God. He didn't trust his Creator to provide for his needs. And Matthew? Matthew wasn't likely to be invited to any Shabbat dinners, was he? He had made his choices to seek personal gain over honoring God and his family. You know, self-will, personal gain will always lead us away from God's plan for our lives and away from any hope that we could ever have to experience true Shabbat, true rest. Mary Magdalene was eager to set aside time to obey God's commandment, to remember her Creator, the one who knew her name, and to celebrate what He had done for her, what He had done in her life, and what He would continue to do for all of her days. I have a question for you. When you think about your own Sabbath day of rest, your own Shabbat, which one of these characters do you most identify with? Are you perhaps more like Nicodemus, so caught up in the routine of Sunday worship, of Sunday rest, that you forget all about the presence of Jesus in your life? You forget to build and work on that relationship with Him. Perhaps you're like Matthew. You're more concerned about your own self-will, your own personal success, that you find you're being led away from the only person who loves you, who can make a difference in your life, and that is God Himself. Perhaps you may be like Simon Peter. You're so consumed and worried about your own financial burdens, your financial hardships providing for your family, that you don't ever really sit down and take time to be still and know that He is God, that He will provide for your needs and take care of you just like He did for the Israelites when they were wandering in the wilderness. You know, Mary Magdalene, she was excited. She was eager to be in the presence of the Lord. Jesus was with her. He was in her heart and in her soul. She looked forward to a time of rest, to think about that relationship, to think about all that He done for her and all that He is going to do. So Shabbat is a reminder that God is faithful to His chosen people and that He is present with us even now. You know, Matthew, chapter 11, Jesus is talking. Let's see what Jesus says. Turn with me, if you would, to Matthew 11, beginning with verse 28. Hear these wonderful words written in red. Listen to these first few words. "Come to me." Jesus says, "Come to me. All ye who are weary and heavy-laden, and I will give you rest. Take My yoke upon you and learn from Me; for I am gentle and humble in heart; and you will find rest for your souls; for My yoke is easy; and My burden is light." You know, God may not change our circumstances, but He will change us, and He will stay with us and provide a way through the wilderness just as He did all those years ago for those Israelites. I want you to think about a fill-in-the-blank. Think about a fill-in-the-blank for this week as you study God's Word. I know God is with me in what? God is with me in what? Think about maybe the circumstances that you're going through, maybe some burdens, financial hardships, personal hardships with your family. I want you to know that God is with you. He loves you. He will never forsake you. He longs for you to come to Him, rest in His arms, and know that He has a wonderful plan for you and for your life. Focus on Jesus. Everything at this table, everything that Mary Magdalene had on her table was significant of Jesus. You know, when she opened that door and Jesus came in and sat down, she was fumbling for the words to say. She probably couldn't remember the prayer exactly the way that Nicodemus would have done it. But she had Jesus with her. He was there in her midst, just as He is with us. These candles represent Jesus. He's the light of the world. He is the Son of God and the Son of Man. The drink that would have been there, that cup of Elijah. This would have been the fruit of the vine when she says, "Blessed are you, Lord our God, ruler of the universe, who gives us the fruit of the vine." That fruit, that fruit of the vine reminds us of the new covenant that we do in our Lord's supper, isn't it? The fruit of the vine is the blood that... The fruit of the vine is the blood that Jesus shed when He hung on Calvary's cross to pay for your sins and for mine. The bread that she would have had, the bread would have been a symbol also of Jesus. Jesus is the bread of life. He gave His body for us. His body was broken. His body was nailed to a cross so that you and I can be forgiven and we can have everlasting life. They would have taken the bread. They would have dipped it in salt to remind us that we are the salt of the earth. And they would have eaten that bread. They would have drank that fruit of the vine. And they would have remembered how God has been faithful throughout all these generations. And God will always be faithful to you and to me. On to the Sabbath day. Find a day of rest, whatever day that is for you. I want you to read God's Word and study His Word just like we did today. And remember that Jesus is our Creator. He loves us. He knows our name. He wants us to rest in Him. I have the Chosen Devotional. It's a 40-day devotional that I'm reading. Today is the 10th day of our 40-day devotion. And I wanted to read the Scripture to you because it ties in perfectly with the message today of Session 2. The devotional Scripture comes from 1 Corinthians, Chapter 1, verses 15 through 17. "The Son is the image of the invisible God, the firstborn over all creation; for in Him all things were created, things in heaven and on earth, visible and invisible, whether thrones, or powers, or rulers, or authorities; all things have been created through Him and for Him. He is before all things, and in Him all things hold together." Shabbat is all about Jesus. He is our Creator, our Sustainer, our Comforter, and our Redeemer. Our prayer focus for this week, give thanks to God for the soul rest that He offers us through Christ. Thank you for your daily provision and protection and for His abiding presence in our lives. Thank Him for giving His body, the bread of life, for His atoning blood, that fruit of the vine of the New Covenant. May you find rest in the God of the heavens and the earth, and may it give you lasting peace. Shabbat shalom, my friends. Until we can be together again next week. I hope you have a blessed week in the Lord. Amen.